Board of Supervisors, back to order, January 9th at 2:00 PM. Item 50, please.
Yes, Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Cerna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum. Item number 50, Appeal of Order After Hearing to Confirm Report of Abatement Costs and Resolution Denying Appeal and Confirming Report of Costs by Mr. George Foggi for 8602 Winding Way.
Thank you. We're going to have the code speak first and lay out what they have done.
Thank you. Deidra Andres, Code Enforcement Manager. Mr. Foggi has been the owner of record for the property located at 8602 Winding Way in Fair Oaks since February of 2003. The home was under foreclosure in January of 2016 and being managed by the Bank of America Property Preservation Unit. Mr. Foggi resumed full ownership of the property in September of 2016. So Code Enforcement case CODX 2016-137 was opened on January 12th, 2016, as a referral from the Building Department for junk and rubbish and a fallen-down fence. The case was closed for compliance a year later, on January 19th of 2017. An initial inspection of the property on January 13th, 2016, found the property vacant, to be open and accessible to the public, with an in-ground pool filled with green water. This property was vacant, open, and accessible, and imminently dangerous. There was public access to the pool due to the falling-down fence. These conditions posed a serious risk to public health and safety. The door of the property was secured by code enforcement, and the property was posted with a notice to secure the pool area. An inspection fee of $470 was charged. Code enforcement took proactive steps to abate the nuisance, issuing a directive's determination to authorize the county to abate with fencing. The notice and order was served on all parties of record, including Mr. Foggi, on January 14th of 2016. Code enforcement fenced the property with county contracted fencing on January 15th, 2016, at a cost of $370. In order to secure the county's interest, a notice of pending enforcement action, ANOPIA, was recorded against the property on February 3rd, 2016, and occurring at a cost of $261. Over the next several months, the county continued to monitor the property. At an inspection on October 17th, 2016, code enforcement encountered a work crew hired by Mr. Foggi conducting repairs on the property. Code enforcement observed that the work crew had removed the temporary safety fencing installed by the county, and that portions of the fencing were missing. Code enforcement spoke with Mr. Foggi regarding the fence panels, advising him that the contractor would be at the property to retrieve the fencing the following day, and that it should be available. Subsequently, code enforcement was informed by the fence company that there was no fencing available for pickup at the subject property at the appointed time. Mr. Foggi was contacted via conference call with the fence contractor on the line. During the call, Mr. Foggi was informed that the fencing had been removed and needed to be returned. Mr. Foggi indicated that he could not locate the fence, and stated to bill him for it. On November 8th, 2016, the county was invoiced $1,255.50, which included the fencing company's maintenance fees for three months, and the cost of the missing fence. In addition to the above costs, there was $361.20 in board-approved administrative fees, and a title report required for the cost confirmation hearing at a cost of $181. Mr. Foggi elected to contest the cost confirmation hearing, incurring additional cost. He is now appealing the order after hearing to confirm report of abatement costs of $4,063.18. Denial of this appeal will confirm all enforcement costs incurred by the county. Staff is recommending that the board deny the appeal, and require Mr. Foggi to repay the county the funds it expended to bring his property into compliance with county code.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Foggi?
So I will be referring mainly to three pages that I've labeled as Exhibits A through C. They are contained in the package that you all have. However, I'm thinking that if you have them in front of you, it might make it easier instead of having to ruffle through all the pages, so I have five sets right here.
Could you introduce yourself for the record?
Yes, I apologize. My name is George Foggi. I'm the owner of the property in question.
Okay, thank you. I'll put five minutes on the clock.
Thank you. How much time do I have? So, the basis of my appeal is that the hearing officer basically exceeded her authority to confirm the cost of that issue. Now, first, the cost of that issue, what we're talking about is a few panels of, a few temporary chain-link fences, if you want to call them that, that were installed at 8602 Winding Way at a time when I did not have possession of the property. I came into possession of this property in September of 2016, and the subject fencing was installed in January of that year. Okay? Now, so, three points. Number one, the hearing officer exceeded her powers. What was presented to her at the hearing was only a summary of these charges, and I've labeled that as Exhibit A on the three pages that I've handed you. The second point is that this fencing was not required or necessary, and I'll explain why that was. And then finally, the third point is that no evidence was presented by the county to support these charges. So, going back to point one, the fee summary, if you will, that's labeled as Exhibit A, I handed it to you. Aside from being extremely excessive, if you look, there are 16 fees on that page, 16 fees. And what it costs for someone like me to be here in front of you, nice people, is, I added it up, $1,500. $1,510 for me just to be able to be here and ask a few questions. I think that's excessive. We're talking about three temporary panels, three chain-link panels. For somebody to have to spend $1,500 just to be able to be here and ask a couple of questions, it's all much, because I am paying my property taxes for the county of Sacramento. I think I should be able to be here without spending another $1,500 bucks. But, that aside, there are 16 fee charges on this page, fee summary. And if you look to the left, there are invoice numbers, starting with 777051. Now, since this whole issue began in September of 2016, you know, we're going on more than a year and a half, I've asked for all the documentation supporting these charges. I've never been provided with the actual invoices. This is just a summary. I don't know if the county has these invoices with them now. I would love to see them, so I can examine them. I don't know what these charges are. Presumably, there's an invoice for every charge, and they exist somewhere. I would like to have them. I would like to review them, so I can address them. So, number one, this cost was validated by the hearing officer in the absence of her having the actual invoices. Okay? A fee summary is not sufficient, and it was not sufficient for the hearing officers. I don't believe it's sufficient for you folks today to decide whether these charges are legitimate, when you don't have the actual invoices. All right, now, moving on. These charges were incurred, or the panels in question were installed in January, January of 2016. As I stated before, I was not in possession of the property at the time. County had contact with the bank that was owning the property at the time. So the bank came out, and they did something called "winterize." They winterized the property. What that means is, they turn off the water, they turn off the gas, they locked the property so no one could have access inside the home, and you have pictures in your packet. And they placed, they installed this pool cover over the pool, so in case somebody did get into the yard, obviously, they wouldn't fall in the pool. I'll tell you, when I took possession of the house, it took a professional to remove that pool cover. That is how solid this pool cover was. There's advertising on the net, and they have an elephant actually sitting on this pool cover. That is how strong and solid this thing was. It requires special tools to install the cover and to remove it. So at the time when the code enforcement went there and decided that, you know, some of this fencing was required, the pool cover was already in place. So clearly, there was no need for additional fencing to prevent people from getting to the pool, because the pool was already covered. Okay?
Are you close to finish?
I got another two minutes, please.
Pardon me?
Yes, two minutes.
Okay, you've had five and a half so far.
Okay, all right. So, now, going back to these invoices, you know, Exhibits B and C that I've handed you, these invoices don't make any sense. They're from a company called L&amp;M Rental. I tried to contact them, they never answered the phone. If you look at the invoices, they're quite suspicious. First of all, they're 11 months apart, but it's the same invoice number. You know, it says something called, there's a box in the center that says, "Please note our new address." Okay? People don't have that, 11 months after they change addresses. They may have it the first month, but not 11 months later. These invoice numbers don't match with anything on the summary, which is Exhibit A. At the bottom, it says, "Due net in 30 days." So in other words, this company expected payment from the county or from code enforcement within 30 days. No payments have been made, and we're two years after the fact.
Okay.
So I have serious reservations about this invoice. I think at a minimum, I would like a copy of the contract between the county and this company, L&amp;M Rental, to see exactly why they charged for this fencing. If you look at the invoices, it doesn't say how many fences they dropped off, and how many they picked up, but for some reason, I'm being charged $4,063 for allegedly three temporary chain-link fences that were dropped out of property unnecessarily. So, yes, I have a big issue with this, and that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, Mr. Natoli. Could you, I just want to make sure I'm clear then, so, is it that when you took possession of the property after it had been fenced some 10 months prior, you never said this, so I just want to be clear, so, were the fence panels there, or you're saying the fence panels were not there?
The fence panels were there, yes.
Okay, so how did they disappear?
They, either L&amp;M, or this gentleman that I spoke with, his name is Gennadi. I spoke with him on the phone, and he informed me that the next day, he was going to be there at the property to remove the panels. And I guess he did come by, removed them, and then he called back and informed me that some of the panels were allegedly missing. But I have no idea how many panels they dropped off in January of 2016, or how many they picked up when they picked them up.
Okay, so your position is, is that whatever was there, was there. When you took possession, it may have comported with what was there in January or not, but that you didn't remove the panels, you didn't take them anywhere, you didn't take them down?
No, sir. And if you look at one of the-
I'm looking at the pictures. I'm trying to get some idea, I've been timeframe-wise, but yeah.
One of the pictures actually has the panels on the ground.
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, no, I did not remove the panels, I did not touch any of the panels. Okay.
There was a lock at the-
Yeah.
And so we opened that to get in, yes, but we didn't remove the panels.
Okay, could I just ask a question of staff? I know this is about confirming-
I want to ask all of them to come up afterwards and respond.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, because I want to get some idea about, okay, all right. That's fine, thanks.
Ms. Frost?
My question's probably to staff.
Okay. What else?
I can ask, I guess I can ask Mr. Foggi. In the report, Mr. Foggi, it says that you had owned the property since 2003.
Correct.
And you stated in January of 2016, you did not have ownership of the, you did not have possession of the property, but you did technically have ownership, is that correct?
No, that's incorrect, and I'm glad you brought that up.
Did you sell the property?
In foreclosure.
If it was in the process of foreclosure, and it wasn't final, then you still had ownership until it was finalized?
That's not what happened.
Pardon me?
That is not what happened, I can explain.
Okay.
So there was some litigation between me and the bank, and we resolved that in December of 2014. The agreement was that they would pay me a sum of money, and I would give the property back to them, starting with January 2015. I did that, that's when I vacated the place. January 2015, I gave up possession of the property. They contacted me back a year and a half later, and said, "Do you want the property back?" I said, "Yes." Paid them, got the property back. So there was a year and a half there that I did not have possession of the property. And there's an agreement, its terms are confidential, I couldn't bring the agreement, but the gist of it is, at the subject times, when these fences were being installed, I did not have possession of the property. And the fact-
They were installed in January 2016?
Yes.
But in January 2016, you did take back possession of the property?
No, in September.
September.
Yeah, nine months after.
Was your name recorded off the property? Was the recording, was this a transaction recorded?
Yes, yes. At the time of the settlement, in December of 2014, documents were signed whereby I gave the property back to the bank, and they were supposed to record some documents. I don't know whether they did or not. I continued to receive mail, I'll admit to that, as if I was the owner.
Okay, I probably have some questions of staff then, after that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You can be seated, and we'll ask staff to come back up.
Thank you.
I'm not sure, it sounds like the bank did not record the property into their name. It sounds like the property was still in Mr. Foggi's name throughout that entire period.
That's correct. It never changed title, was always in Mr. Foggi's name since 2003.
So the bank took responsibility for the property because no one else was there? They basically took responsibility, but technically, it was still his property?
That's correct. That's why he was given all the notices, he was sent notices as the code enforcement action was continuing to happen. He was continuing, he was being sent notices about all the things that were happening on the property.
And was he receiving all the notices at the, was he picking, he said he was receiving mail at the property throughout that time? So he received all these invoices and all the activities on what was happening at the house?
With regard to the invoices, yes. And so actually, what we've had is, not only is the property, as the code enforcement action was ongoing, do we send certain documentations to the owner of record, which he was, but we also, at the time when we took the case to cost confirmation, provided copies of all, the entire packet, including the invoices, and provided that for him to be able to review at the hearing, as well as, he's talked with the Department of Revenue and Recovery, and they provided him additional documentation. So I don't know what additional documentation he needed to review, but he was provided everything that we had in the packet to review with regard to the invoices.
And then, my last question is, I have a swimming pool. My understanding is there are requirements for fencing around a swimming pool, and a pool cover does not replace that requirement or substitute that requirement. You have to have a fence around a pool, is that-
That is correct.
Am I understanding correctly?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. And the fencing around the property was, had fallen, so we needed to fence the property.
Thank you.
Mr. Natoli, did you have some questions?
I guess, I just wanted to understand about the fence. I think there's been some clarification relative to possession of the property, even though documents may have been signed, it's still, I guess, for all intent purposes, was Mr. Foggi's property, even though the bank may have made some arrangements, since it didn't record. So, how do we determine that the fence, was there a certain number of panels that we signed off on, when the code officer, when the fence was initially put in place, and then when they returned to pick it up, they were no longer there? Again, maybe through no fault of Mr. Foggi's, but if they were on his property, I guess that's how we deal with it. So give me a little bit of understanding about what transpired from January of 16 to October 16, whenever the fence was removed, or November.
Sure. The fence was installed, and then the code enforcement officer went by periaclay to check the property and make sure that it was still, that fencing was maintained, and the property was still maintained, being secure. When he went by the property the day before, those are the pictures you see, the fence panels, Mr. Foggi had hired, I guess, some contract team to do some work at the property, and they had already started to remove the fence panels, and that's the picture you see where the fence panels are on the ground. At that time, officer, the code enforcement officer noted that it seemed that some of the panels were missing, which is what prompted him to make contact with Mr. Foggi, and let him know that they were going to be, the contractor, the county contractor, would be at the property the following day, and would need to recover all of the fence panels, because we had noted some were already missing. But when the county contractors showed up, the fence panels were not there. And that's why they charged us for the entire fence. We had to pay for the fence because it wasn't there. We'd paid maintenance charges on the fence, but then while the fence is missing, now we have to pay for the fence.
So you're paying for the lost panels?
Exactly.
Three of them?
Exactly. I'm not exactly sure the number of the fence panels that were missing by the time we came back, but I know we ended up having to pay that $12,000.
$1,200.
$1,200 for the fence.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Foggi, did you, Foggi, okay? You have two minutes.
Thank you. So, I think we digress from what the point is. The point is that no documentation has been submitted to justify these costs. I mean, this lady just stood up here and told you that she paid $1,200 for these panels. I mean, this lady just stood up here and told you that she paid $1,200 for these panels. That's not here. There's a fee summary that says nothing's been paid. So-
There is a $1,200 on there, and I don't want to take your time, but there's $1,200 there in the middle of the page.
Right, right. That's a fee due, but hasn't been paid, which begs the question, what is the contract between this company and the county? If these people haven't been paid in two years, I don't even know if L&amp;M is still in business. So, how does this work? These people have an invoice that says payment is due in 30 days, which was generated two years ago. They haven't been paid, but yet I'm being charged 4,500, 40, whatever it is, $4,000 for these three panels. Doesn't make sense.
If you could pause for a second, we'll get an answer to that.
So, I want you to focus on the lack of supporting evidence. There are 16 charges on this fee summary without invoices. I think you all need to have the invoices before you decide whether they're valid or not. I don't think a fee summary is sufficient.
If you could pause for a minute and step back, we'll have code enforcement address that.
Okay.
Thank you.
The fee summary provided to Mr. Foggi is for his payment. The county has already made payment to L&amp;M Fencing. These are fees that were charged to Mr. Foggi that he has not paid. That's why the fee summary is showing no payment. It's not because the county hasn't taken care of its obligation. To L&amp;M, we have.
And there is an invoice. You said at the hearing that invoices that matched each of these numbers was made available to Mr. Foggi, or provided to Mr. Foggi?
The fee summary was provided to Mr. Foggi at the hearing, and he was, he was communicating with Department of Revenue and Recovery with regard to each of the specific charges on the fee summary.
Do we have copies of all the invoices? To his question, that's a very, whether one deems it relevant or not, but that's his question. Or is there, I assume there's a backup document for each of these charges?
For, yes.
And that could be made available to Mr. Foggi?
Yes, we can get it from the Department of Revenue and Recovery.
Okay.
Okay. Could you do that, please?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. If, any further, County Council?
If I could just bring your attention to Attachment 4 of the board item. The hearing officer makes clear that the binder, the hearing binder, had, at the request of the applicant, relevant evidentiary documents were provided for the code enforcement. It was part of the hearing officer's packet. Attachment 4, the order after hearing to confirm-
So, the pages aren't numbered, so it takes us a while to catch up with you. And I'm with you now, okay. Attachment 4?
Let's see, I'm on the second page.
Okay.
The prepared a binder with, which contained the relevant evidentiary documents. So, that was, and that the argument was made by the applicant as to the breakdown, but that the hearing officer found sufficient things there and that the, the cost was not disputed, and so ultimately decided that the county was entitled to recover these costs. So, I think we're rehashing the same events that took place at the cost confirmation hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
That is absolutely incorrect. I've asked for copies of the back and front and back of these checks that were allegedly paid to anyone on this case since the very beginning. I said, "Please, send me copies of the front and back checks." I still haven't been provided one.
I don't think we have to give you the front and back of the check.
Yes.
You've got an invoice that says it was paid, so-
Well, I don't have an invoice that says it was paid. I have an invoice that says it was due.
It says here that you do.
I'm sorry?
It says in our staff report that you do, that you got a binder with the evidence in it.
With all the respect, that doesn't make it so. I need the actual proof. I would like to see the front and back of the check. Why wouldn't I be entitled to that? Why wouldn't I be entitled to that? What's the difficulty in the county providing me with a copy of a check they paid?
Uh, County Council to respond.
So, again, I'm trying to be reasonable. I've attempted to reduce this or negotiate in some fashion. You're begging me to take it a step further, and I think it's not necessary. I think we can resolve it. These panels cost $80 a panel. I looked into it.
I think we've heard your argument.
Good.
Thank you. If I could, you could be seated, and we could ask County Council to respond to the front and back of the check question.
Front and back, I mean, certainly he's entitled to any public records that he's made a request for. I don't know that this was a request that was made at that time. I just know that the hearing officer's decision was that she found sufficient evidence for proof of what the county's statement was and the costs as set forth in the binder of evidentiary evidence.
And the hearing officer is a third party who isn't anyone in this room?
Correct.
Ms. Natale?
Ms. Frost was first.
Was there a paid receipt on those billings? Usually, when you pay a bill, they give you a receipt of payment sometimes?
I would turn to staff-
Was that provided?
For what was in that binder. Are you concerned, are you talking about the fencing?
All these, in the binder that he received, did it show a paid receipt from L&amp;M on all the invoices submitted, or any proof of-
Yeah, we have a contract with L&amp;M Fencing, and we have, we can provide documentation that, that they were paid through our contract. It's not, it's not a check, it's a contractual agreement, and so, we have that evidence. And oh, by the way, I just want to also point out that Mr. Foggi did appear at the non-contested cost confirmation hearing requesting to be, to be heard, which is why he was moved to the contested calendar. But when the contested calendar came up, he was not there. He sent a representative, and that representative did not contest the cost. And again, as, as County Council has pointed out, there was documented evidence of everything that we've charged there, as well as him having additional conversations with the Department of Revenue and Recovery. And I also talked to him about asking for, submitting a public records request for any and everything we had associated with this property. I spoke with him personally, and, and that request was never made.
Thank you very much. Anything further, Mr. Natale?
Just to be clear, in the same attachment 4, it does say, on page 3 of that same attachment in the middle of the page, above the subtitle says "Order," it says, "The property owner requested a breakdown of fees and supporting invoices, receipts during the hearing, this previous hearing in September, but was advised that administrative fees were set by county code and therefore did not have any corresponding invoices or receipts." So, I take it that on this sheet, a number of these things do not have invoices attached with them, they're just a, a set cost, to the point about fencing or any outside work, obviously, that should have an invoice and a, you know, some status of that, but, so a whole lot of these things on this page here don't have an invoice or any corresponding paperwork, except for that they were, I guess, charged off by the department. Is that correct, Robin?
Because they're fees set by ordinance, correct.
But there, does there not have to be some record of time, or some point of contact, or, I mean, you just don't, it's just not done by a computer-generated, "Well, you know, 30 days past, 31st day, we start applying a fee." There needs to be some entry, is there not?
Which the department would have in its possession.
Guys, I just want to be clear about this. Go.
So, after the code enforcement officer, let's, for instance, makes an inspection and comes back, they, we have it into our Acela database, where they enter the fees that they've charged for their particular time, or for a particular hearing or particular situation. So, that is entered into our database, Acela.
Okay, and just one other question while you're up to then. So, why, why the broad fluctuation in what's termed the IT recovery fee? It runs everything from $11, or $9.77 all the way up to, you know, somewhere just shy of, of $70. So, if that's a fee set by ordinance, what is that? I know it's for, I guess, for what it says, you know, information technology recovery fee, but how is it, again, one moment it's $9.77, and then another moment it's $67.77?
It's calculated as a percentage of the fee that's charged. So, for instance, inspections fees, $470, and so that percentage of that particular fee for the IT fee was $21, and so on and so forth. For every fee that's, that's charged, the IT recovery fee is a specific percentage of that fee.
And that's based on what?
It's based on board-approved-
No, I know ordinance, but I mean, so what's it supposed to represent? More time, more effort? Is it just, just a percentage to be?
It's a cost recovery mechanism for the use of our Acela system. We apply to all building permits, all permit actions that go through Acela, because that whole system is supported via that revenue source in terms of keeping it up to date and monitoring and administering and managing that system. It's called the IT recovery fee. It's been in place for 18 years, probably, something like that.
But this thing about the percentage, so if you could just help me real quickly on this, so I don't know if you have this in front of you, Mike, but if you're looking at-
It's calculated as a basis of every transaction that goes into Acela. That's why you see it over and over, because those are individual transactions, and each one of those transactions is based on a percentage as a part of the Acela fee program that's been adopted.
But it doesn't reflect any amount of work or any amount of effort, it's just a, a set percentage?
It's, and it's based on the number of transactions that go through the system, which defines how, so, yeah.
I guess, aside from this hearing, it raises a point with me, I'm gonna look at you now, I, I think that needs, I'd like to have some further explanation as to, whether it's been around for 18 years or 1,800 years. If it just automatically was charged, I get it. I mean, I've seen it in, you know, countless, you know, things that we, you know, come across our desk, but for some reason, I always thought it reflected some sort of relationship to the work. But if it's just access to the system, and it's just a sheer percentage, then, you know, I guess I'd like to know about the equity and fairness of how that's done, and maybe it's totally fair, totally equitable, and I'm not talking about Mr. Foggi's case here, I'm talking about in general. So, I'd like to have, someone just will follow on to that, since it's been-
Okay.
Two minutes.
We'll do that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Andrews. It seems to me we held the appropriate hearing, and with the appropriate notices, and I would move to deny the appeal of order after hearing and confirm report of abatement costs.
Second?
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Next item?
Item number 51, appeal of order after hearing to confirm report of abatement costs and resolution denying appeal and confirmation reports of costs for the property located at 7690 Florencia Lane.
Good afternoon, Deidra Andrews for Sacramento County Code Enforcement. Code enforcement cases are taken to cost confirmation hearing only after all of the violations confirmed on the property have been brought into compliance. The purpose of the cost confirmation hearing is for the county to recover the cost that it expended to bring the property into compliance. For the property located at 7690 Florencia Lane, the enforcement case was opened on February 4th, 2016, and the county was not able to close the case to compliance until May 8th, 2017. It took the county 15 months, 12 inspections, only five of which were charged, and a nuisance hearing before Mr. Sharma bought the property into substantial compliance with county code. The county was required to expend resources for this case, resources for this case, five inspections at $335 each, a nuisance hearing at $536.50 for the hearing officer, and $318.42 for the code enforcement officer, a cost confirmation hearing at $515, and a $295 contested fee, title reported $150, and an opia at $261. The property owner is responsible to maintain his property in compliance with county code. Since Mr. Sharma took over a year to bring his property into compliance, he continued to accrue charges. He also elected not to pay the fees associated with the enforcement activity, which required the county to take him to cost confirmation hearing. The county incurred $4,092.17 in hard costs to bring this property into compliance, and is asking that the board deny this appeal and require Mr. Sharma to repay the county for the funds it expended to bring his property into compliance.
Thank you. Any questions, it's time? Okay, we can hear from the property owner. Mr.? Sharma? Sorry.
Good afternoon. My name is Madan Sharma, LEG Construction.
And you're the property owner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Give you five minutes.
Oh, you are, you gave me five minutes?
We have rules about how long you can speak, and so you have five minutes to make the, have a conversation about why you're appealing the decision.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, actually, I am a builder. I build homes. I am not a rental business. And unfortunately, I bought those property 2002, 2002, and those, the house was empty. Some of the house was empty, and then homeless people get in. I have a tough time to get it out. Even I call sheriff and even ask county to help me out, and what I supposed to do? Then I repaired the house, I spent about $20,000, $30,000 to make a livable the house. Then I turned to be bad rental, he just growing marijuana and other stuff. Then I hired attorney to vet them. He never pay the rent, he make a lot of mess. And then I cleaning up all those things, then I, finally, I called Mr. Don Natale, and I said, "You know, Mr. Natale, I, I'm in business almost 30, 40 years. I have a really problem. I don't know what to do." He said, "Sharma, you know what to do. You are business. Just go to the county, get the permit, and, you know, follow the list and get done." I took his advice. I, I did exactly somebody told me, and, but I have the permit, I pulled the permit, and I have a several inspection, and the final was sign off, and one of the thing is, code enforcement people, without information, without telling me, without make any appointment, they just go, you know, just go and find different thing, different thing, and continues repairing and make a livable. And, you know, that's the kind of, I feel this is injustice for me. And I request the appeal, you know, I spent about $700, $800 to just present my case, myself, but I'm going through, this is, look like discrimination with me. I did exactly. I hear the permit, I wanna show you what I did. How many sign I have, can you, can I bring it?
Paula, could you help him put that on the white screen? Okay, can you, it's on the screen up here, can you see it?
Can I, can I put one more thing? Can you look at it?
Sure.
Yeah, this is my track record last 40 year in business. I, I got a grade almost 100% or 99%, and I never have any complaint against my license since when I'm business. I honestly, I know by business, I try to help people, I always does, but the fine I receive was not justice, you know? That's why I feel, but whatever you guys decide, I will honor it. I, I work with the county and city, been a long time. I don't wanna argue, I don't wanna fight. I just wanna be fair something, you know? The guy is paying millions of dollar taxes in many, many sense when I'm business, and just couple thousand, three, four thousand dollars, just kind of harassment to me. That's the reason I've come front of you. I never been there in, in the desk for that reason, that's that kind of complaint. I request you, whatever you guys decide, I will honor it, but my feeling inside is, is not fair with me. Whatever you guys, that's all I wanna say. Look at my track record, I've been, actually, I done in city, one of the subdivision, I make it, and there was a 95 house I built, that was a bad area, flood zoning, and city, city of Sacramento gave me the award for that, because when I built that, there was Florin and Indian Lane, there was 95 house built, and when I developed the subdivision, and all the neighborhoods started developing additioning, because the new subdivision come in their neighborhood, almost each and everybody's have a price raised by $30,000 to $40,000. And city of Sacramento, you know, invite me in the office, gave me some appreciation. That's the kind of work I'm doing. I'm not fighting for the $3,000, $4,000, but I just wanna be, whatever you guys decide. Take a look at my record, and, you know, I'm not bad guys, or I'm not doing anything, and that's all I wanna say. I wanna say.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Kennedy, do you have any comments? Anyone else have any? That's Mr. Nattoli.
I would just, to the point that Mr. Sharma made, this is in Supervisor Kennedy's district and was in Supervisor...
Mr. Sharma, you can be seated.
Yeah, and it was actually Supervisor Yee's district at a time when there were some previous issues, but he's exactly correct. When he spoke to me, I said he needed to go ahead and get the permits and get it cleaned up. And, you know, he proceeded to do that. But I think the thing that's kind of missing here, I would just point this out, is that there were costs incurred, Mr. Sharma, before you'd taken those actions. And yes, you got the matter corrected, and there's a recognition of that if the permits are final and so forth. But there were costs incurred, and just because something's corrected, and it was actually in the staff report, doesn't necessarily mean the costs are forgiven. And so that's kind of what's before us. Obviously, you've made your case here today, but I would just indicate that, you know, it certainly wasn't upon my advice, but necessarily, but I did tell, you know, tell him very frankly, that, you know, again, as a builder, he knew what you've done. There were code violations both within the house but also on the property, and he, I assumed sufficiently took care of that. I would just note too, and maybe you're aware of this, Supervisor Kennedy, there is a pending development proposal on this property. So I think that, you know, we'll see that at some point in time that Mr. Sharma's bringing forward, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Is there a motion?
Move staff recommendation.
Second?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you for coming.
Item 53 is county executive comments.
No comments this afternoon.
Okay. 54, supervisor's comments, reports, and announcements. Supervisor announcements. If you could speak into the microphone, Paula, you've been hard to hear today. That's great. Anyone?
I just wanted to comment that we received a letter this last week regarding Mr. Greg Blick, the superintendent of our Ansel Hoffman Golf Course.
Oh, yeah.
On behalf of 600 members and the board at Ansel Hoffman, they commended them on their work at the Ansel Hoffman Golf Club, and I just wanted to say, thank them for their good work and commend them for that. That's it.
No, anyone? Okay. Yeah, I thought that was a nice letter too. Ansel Hoffman, look, if we could just get the road fixed out there, that'd be, and the fence, that'd be great. Golf course is in great shape. I do have an adjournment today, and in memory of Albert Dreyfus, last Sacramento, last month, the Sacramento area lost an icon of the architectural community with the passing of Albert Dreyfus. He was a native of Louisiana and moved to Sacramento in 1948 and soon formed with his business partner, Lynn Blackford, the architecture firm of Dreyfus and Blackford. In 1955, they landed a major contract to design the original SMUD building, headquarters building on S Street, which introduced our area to post-war modernist design concepts. Besides SMUD, their firm designed distinctive buildings for IBM, the former Sacramento Union newspaper, the original Nut Tree, the Mansion Inn, the Sacramento and San Francisco airports, and the Calpers headquarters. The firm, under his guidance, received more than 100 awards for design excellence. He was also an early and longtime supporter of the American River Parkway and led the effort to build the initial home of the Effiyah Nature Preserve. His designs really helped shape the vibrant community we call home, and I'd like to adjourn today in memory of Al Dreyfus. No other business before us. This meeting is adjourned.